Hello, everyone. My name is Valerie Bong and I will be one of the moderators for tonight. Before I introduce myself, I want to warmly thank each and every one of you for being here tonight, for being interested, and for caring about what the youth has to say about Lynn and Lynn students. I graduated at the top of my class at Lynn English High School in 2018. And right now, I'm a rising senior at Clark University, where I double major in English and Environmental Science with a minor in Political Science. Thank you. I hold an order for public service, activism, and social justice. I'm a fellow for Prevent the Cycle this summer, in which I am one of the first to partake in this program. I also intern for Masburg and New American Leaders, and you may be familiar with me as a volunteer for some of the candidates running in Lynn. I will now hand over the mic to Marissa, who will be my partner emcee for tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marissa Pike, and I'll be assisting Valerie in moderating this evening. I'd like to take a moment to tell you a little bit about myself and why this matters to me. Currently, I am a full-time student at the University of Boston, finishing up a bachelor's in criminal justice with a minor in sociology. I also hold an associate's in early childhood education and a certificate in developmental disabilities. I'm a mentor through Big Sister Boston, a member of Prevent the Cycle, and an activist in the community. Not only am I closely involved with the city's election, I understand the importance of having a school committee that understands the students and families they are serving.
So, I agree, Marissa, that the school committee is one of the most important aspects in our city. I am the utmost grateful for the opportunities I have encountered through Prevent the Cycle, one in which is this very candidate forum that we are all present for now. I, alongside my team and Adriana, worked tirelessly to have this all planned and organized. But it is because of all of you, those who completed the survey we made, shared our posts on social media, and the school committee, candidates that agreed to attend, that genuinely helped kick-start this event. This candidate forum is an opportunity for all of us, of all ages, to actually hear the voices of the youth and to listen to the major concerns and issues we deeply care about. We want to be heard, and we need to be heard. However, it is not just about being heard, but actually being listened to and leading a movement that has all hands on deck. So, there needs to be action, which is why we formed the Prevent the Cycle's newest campaign, Speak Up, Speak Out.
The goal of today is to highlight the major issues that affect the students and families of Lynn Public Schools. By attending today, you are allowing us to bring these issues to the forefront of this election. Now for the rules. In a moment, you will each be given two minutes to introduce yourselves. The rest of the forum will be broken down into categories. Each category consists of questions that both the community and the youth of Prevent the Cycle have developed. With each question, you will be allotted a minute and a half to provide an answer. At the conclusion of the evening, each candidate will be given a minute for closing remarks, which include any rebuttals or clarification each candidate wishes to make. James will be our timekeeper this evening. He will hold up the countdown cards at the 30-second mark and the 10-second mark. And finally, use the buzzer when your time is out. Without further ado, let's begin with introductions. We will begin with Brian and go from left to right.
Can anyone hear me?
Yeah.
Good, good. Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, and I want to thank Prevent the Cycle, the youth panel. Really, you guys are my inspiration. The folks in this community are my inspiration. Again, my name is Brian Castellanos. I am a second-term incumbent. I am a first-generation low-income Latino. I graduated from Lynn English High School. I am a firm believer in community and active civic engagement has been something that I always been embracing throughout my career in public service. I am a DCF employee. I started off my career as an adolescent social worker licensed out of the Lynn area office, and I recently transitioned as a northern regional missionary-absent investigator, outreach specialist, where I am on the front lines of combat in child trafficking. And I work with some of the most... Every day, I work in misery, and I work in hell, and I try to pull kids and rescue kids from some of the most difficult scenarios that the world has to offer. I'm a very strong advocate for children, especially when it comes to child abuse and prevention and neglect, and also just building pathways for our most vulnerable children, students, and families who are in this city, who are exposed to the school-to-prison pipeline and also the school-to-trauma, the trauma-to-prison pipeline. So, I've made it my everyday action. I'm a man of action. I really, it's always, it's humbling to come in front of everybody, to talk about what you do and who you are, and I make it my point to take action before I speak about what I am and what I do. What I represent is hope. Again, as I mentioned, I'm a first-generation low-income kid. I had nothing. I come from nothing, and I made something of my life because of the people in this city, and I'm grateful to be here and a public servant for you guys, and I look forward to talking. Yeah, thank you.
That's a good one. She's only for questions.
Hi, my name is Johnika Pollard, and I presently sit on the Lynn School Committee as the vice chair. I'm married to my husband, Harry, and a parent of four adult children that have all graduated from the Lynn Classical High School and all were in public school. I have six granddaughters, and four of them are in public school, and two are just too young yet to be in public school, but they, I'm sure, eventually will be. I have graduated from North Shore Community College as U under the DDS program, and also graduated from the UMS in Boston. I presently work for Joy Childcare Center, and I case-manage a teen-parent program. These are gals that do have babies, and they are presently in our Lynn Public Schools. And my job is to encourage them to move on and go to higher education. I would also like to say that my number-one priority is the students in Lynn, the 17,000-plus students that we have. I put them first and foremost, and I appreciate and thank the Prevent the Cycle for having us here today.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Gately, and I am currently on the Lynn School Committee. I'm in a very unique position because I taught in Lynn Public Schools for 33 and a half years. I taught science, biology. I then went on to teach at St. Mary's part-time, and I went to Worcester Polytech, and I learned how to do Introduction to Engineering Design, which was not an easy task, but they needed me to do it, and that's what I did. I attended Lynn English High School. I'm a proud Bulldog. My son went to Lynn Public Schools, and he graduated from Lynn English High School. And so did my niece, Grace. Do you know Grace Gately?
Yes.
Yes. So, Grace went to Lynn English High School. I got on the committee because in 2013, I was sort of fed up with not having a voice, not having a voice that was being listened to, so I decided to be that voice. I did not get on to the school committee my first try, but then I tried again, and I got in in 2015 with the help of a lot of people. I absolutely love students, and I love the fact that we're moving forward in this district, and I would like to continue to be on the school committee so that I can help with that, moving forward. Thank you. Oh, one thing, I forgot. I want to thank the Prevent the Cycle for inviting me here. I'm so sorry.
All right. Well, I'd like to first start by thanking Prevent the Cycle for having us. This is wonderful that it's a youth-run organization. I think it's great for our city that we have the youth involved the way we do, especially tonight. Also, Lynn Museum for hosting us. This is certainly a gem of our city. If you've never been out, you know, definitely come and take a look. It's beautiful here and just a great, great thing for our city. So, my name's Eric Dugan, and I'm running for school committee, obviously. And part of the reason I'm doing that is I'm a parent. Both of my children attended Lynn Classical. My oldest just graduated. He'll be moving on to Anna Maria College. Very proud of him and proud of the work he's put in, but also the teachers that helped him along the way. He wouldn't have been able to do it without them. And my younger son will be a junior at Classical this year. But also, I'm a public school teacher. Been a teacher for 20 years. I know education. I know current trends. I'm up on curriculum, and I'm passionate about teaching and learning. So, I think I can bring value to the committee and a perspective to the committee, that of a parent and a public school educator. And if I'm elected, you know, my number-one priority will be the students, obviously, and, you know, their needs and their family's needs. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So, my name is Daniel Richard, running for school committee. Thank you, Prevent the Cycle, for putting this great event on. I really appreciate it. And I'm running for a school committee for many different reasons. I grew up in Lynn. I'm a product of the Lynn Public School system. I graduated Lynn Classical 2008. I went to Druids Elementary. I went to Breed. So, myself, I know what it's like to be a student. I know what it's like to be in those classrooms and being, sitting there and getting a Lynn Public School education. But also, too, I am a parent. I am a parent to a special-needs child who did go to Shoemaker and went through the coach program, and that is a very, very big deal to me. Having and advocating for families that have kids with special needs or autism is very important. And having access to those resources and understanding that those resources are out there and understanding how to get to those resources is very important. I serve on many different nonprofit boards in the city of Lynn, from Lysola. I actually serve on this board for the Lynn Museum, and I actually am the chairman of the Lynn Community Connections Coalition as well. Once again, I've served here. I work in financial services. I am self-employed at the Primerica Office in Wyoma Square, and that is another reason why I am running for a school committee as well, because I understand financial literacy is a very, very big deal. And having these kids get off to a good start when it comes to finances and understanding how money works and understanding how to use their money to work for them is very important to me. And having the tools and resources and the knowledge that I do have to bring that to the school committee and bring that to the schools is very important to me. So, thank you very much, once again, Prevent the Cycle for putting this on, and I'm very proud to be running for school committee. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tiffany Magmilia, and this is my second time trying to run for school committee, even though I didn't make it last time. A little bit about me, I'm a professor at North Shore Community College. I run our honors program, and I teach English. But also, one of my roles at North Shore Community College is that I'm a diversity educator. I'm actually running a workshop on how to turn writing classrooms into anti-racist spaces for my entire department and all of the folks who teach English. And this is really important to me because, as an educator, but not in the K-12 system, I understand what it is to see the graduates of Lynn Public Schools and their beautiful and wonderful diversity, and understand that where they want to go can look a whole bunch of different ways, and the college can serve them. I'll also tell you that I am a Girl Scout leader. So, I have that big, you know, college side, and I started a Girl Scouts troop with a couple folks from Lynn for kindergarten daisies. Now, our girls are juniors and brownies, so we've seen the troop for five years. And it's pretty exciting to take the girls to see all of the things our city has to offer. I'm a parent, obviously, of an elementary school student here in Lynn. I've also been a citizen lobbyist with the Massachusetts Teachers Association, working with the K-12 higher ed districts all over Essex County, connecting public school folks with their legislators. So, I understand what it means to have access to those in power and to make sure that the people who have the direct experiences have a conduit for that. I think the most important thing to know about me is that I'm an education activist, and I do that from the perspective of a parent and from the perspective of somebody who's been self-supporting since age 16. I graduated high school because I wouldn't have a home if I didn't. And so, I know what it's like to be out there on your own, and I hope to bring that experience to bear on the school committee. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank Prevent the Cycle and everyone working behind the scene, Adriana Paz and everyone else, and everyone who showed up. Thank you for taking your time. My name is Lenny Penya. I'm 49 years old. I'm a lifelong Lynn resident. I work for the, I currently work with the Lynn Water and Sewer Commission. I work at the Lynn YMCA. I'm a youth coordinator, and I work with kids there, and I've been coaching and mentoring kids for over 12 years. One of the reasons that I'm running is that, as a father, I have three, I currently have three children in the Lynn Public School system. I also have four adult children that went to the Lynn Public School system, and I went to the Lynn Public School system myself. And as a parent, I like to be a voice for everyone. You know, being a dad of two students that had IEPs, I remember how the feeling, the things and the experiences that I went through, and I want to make sure I'm a voice to be an advocate and be a voice for that, for that special needs. Also, another reason that I'm running is that Lynn, well, let's talk, let's talk about our student body. We have almost 17,000 students. Eighty-six percent of them are people of color. Sixty-seven percent of them are Latino, and I like to see diversity. That's one of the reasons why I'm running. You know, there's a lack of diversity, and it doesn't reflect in our teachers, in our administration throughout the city. Yo quiero ser una voz con una población de casi 86% de gente de color y 67% Latino. Me gustaría ser una voz y mi meta es ser una voz para todo el mundo. And I like to be a voice for everyone, you know? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandra Lopez, and I want to thank the Prevent the Cycle for this event and take the time to invite me. I'm a little nervous, sorry. So, I've been having like a little issue with my illness, so I'm trying to be in this event and express myself. So, my name is Sandra Lopez. Like I said, this is my second time running, and I have a child who went to the school system. He already graduated, and he goes to UMass Lower, and he studied bioengineering. So, the reason I'm running is because I want to be part of the parents, because I know the frustration they pass while they don't have a good communication with the school system. And I want to be a part of the community who involves a lot of projects for the school be developed. While the passing days coming in, you guys want to be in my website, seeing all those projects are. I've been working in the community for about more than 20 years. I've been working as a chairperson and head star, and they call Leo Building. And over there, I was taking decisions for funding for the program. Then after that, I've been working on Highland Coalition, and over there, I was coordinator of the lip paint program for the city by Lynn Housing Authority. That contract we get it from there. So, after that, I've been working, it's going to be, sounds like, oh, she worked for the charter school, but yes, I've been working for Kip Academy for the adult program. And over there, I was administrative support for the adult program. After that, I've been working as a nurse, assistant to the nurse. And I, I, oh, I'm sorry. I lost my mind. Sorry. But this is me, and I hope everybody look the website.
I still have my two minutes, right?
Yeah.
My pleasure to be here, and I'm so proud to be up here and just heard what I just heard. Running, out of many reasons that I'm proud, hope, expertise in curriculum, experience, live experience, education, diversity. I think Lynn can be proud of this panel. I'm excited, and I'm proud of you guys to make, to help, to help this, yeah, to get the word out. So, I'm Pastor Poson. I came to America as a refugee at a tender age. I'm a proud graduate of public school system, elementary, junior high, high school. I went to Brown, my first choice, and finished with a biochemistry. I did research, actually, even through junior high. Competed in city-wise competition. I went up to state level. I did research all through my undergrad. And after working in research for a couple of years, I had my greater call, which was to respond to the need in the community. And so, I came to Lynn, and I spent my adult age in Lynn. I've been in Lynn for almost 30 years. I might look like 17, but I'm actually a little older than Lenny. So, the reason I'm running is I think, for all these many good reasons, there's one more. I think we need to stop talking about the overcrowdedness. I think we need to put on a hot hat and build a new building. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We will now begin with our first set of questions, which will be led by Tatiana.
Welcome again, and thank you so much for being here. My name is Tatiana Mejii Madri.
Yeah, thanks.
A fellow member of Prevent the Cycle. I'm also a rising senior at Kip Academy Lynn Collegiate, and the category I will be covering today is diversity, inclusion, representation. As a young Black woman of color, I believe it is highly important to speak on representation and topics that are highly relevant for the youth. And without representation and communication throughout local politics, our youth's voices will not be heard or recognized. Many on the survey agree that Lynn schools lack diversity, whether that be with the teachers, principals, or guidance counselors. Lynn has a diverse population and student body, and many agree that this is not the same for those in leadership. So, we cannot wait to hear what the candidates have to say about this topic. Okay, so, to start the questions, all right. So, the very first question is going to be a yes or no from everybody. So, do you believe that there is a lack of diversity, there's a lack of understanding about diversity, inclusivity, and racism in our schools? Raise your hand for yes, and keep your hand down for no. All right, thank you. All right, the second question. So, respondents to our survey have felt that, in relation to mental health, students are not seen or heard, in part because of lack of staff that is not reflective of the student body. So, my question is, what do you believe that the school district can do better or differently to ensure that there are more diverse staff as teachers, and what changes should be made to our curriculum to address racism and bias? Right to left. I'm going to start from right to left.
So, Poson.
Poson, you can go. So, you're, yeah, yeah, you go ahead, Poson, yes. Well, right to left. Well, you know what they got, left to right, left to right. Sorry, there, yeah, you go ahead.
Okay. So, I guess I am right to her, so she is correct. Yeah, I think that we can always and we need to improve on caring for our students, especially the issue of racism. I think we do that by having enough, as a scientist, I think we need to have receptor, right, in order to survey the land and to monitor, to understand what's going on, right? And then the receptor will send that vital signal, and then you have the responder enzyme. Yeah, and so, definitely improve on the receptor and improve on the enzyme. And I think that will encourage the student to feel safe, to feel heard, to feel, have a place that they can express themselves. So, looking at where in our system are the receptor, if we can develop new receptor, that mean maybe designate a person to represent that position, to hear, to have a place, a safe place, to get those feedback, yeah. And then maybe even a pathway to an enzyme, maybe having, advocating for getting these reports, these messages, even to our city attorney, so that that could be a real serious response to them. Thank you.
Acerca de este tema, yo quiero, quiero decirles que nosotros podemos, I'm sorry. Nosotros podemos hacer la diferencia. I'm going to, in English. Yes, about this, we could be different and better, and we can implement more diversity in our school about the professor, but we need to direct those professors and picking the right professional for those areas, because right now, we need to include those professors who work with special kids. So, the professor that we have in the classroom right now, probably they don't be appropriate to treat with those children. And then, we need to, we need to care about them too, but we need to care about who professionals come and work with, and how can we do implementation for that school system, have maximum with those needs. And another thing that we can take a look at, that we need to work with the parents together. The school and the parent need to be working together. That way, the school know what the children's need and how can the school help the childrens.
Mental health, yes, it's a very important issue. Last year, sorry, last year, I watched, I watched the civil project that the Breed Middle School did, and their data that they collected showed that there's a need, and children want to talk about that in our curriculum. You know, it's very important today to look at, look at recently, one of our Olympics, gymnast Simone Biles, she opted out because of mental crisis, and it's something that we need to start talking about it right now. There's nothing wrong with asking for help, and it's something that we need to speak. And I think it's clever that the students brought up that maybe adding a mental crisis phone number on their badges, I think that is amazing, and I think that's something that we need to support. As a school, if elected as a school committee member, that's something I will fight for, more funding for mental health. Thank you.
So, I want to approach the two parts of this question, which is how we deal with staff and teachers is different than how we deal with curriculum, okay? First of all, we have to understand that how people get to the teaching profession matters. If we're looking at recruiting teachers, by the time they've already graduated from a four-year program, it's already too late. I think we need to tap the early college program that's currently in Lynn Public Schools, identify a cohort of potential teachers, and mentor their way from middle school all the way through high school, perhaps partnering with Salem State or even North Shore Community College to provide supports through a teacher education program, and grow our own. How wonderful would it be to have the next generation of Lynn Public School teachers come from Lynn Public Schools? That's the first one. The second, with regards to curriculum, is that we need to look at professional development for teachers that get us out of this really damaging cycle of white shame and white guilt. Instead, we need to teach people to look at racism as a structural problem with which they are either part of the solution or part of the problem. And I lead these kinds of workshops myself at the college level. I know they can be extremely successful because people genuinely want to do the right thing, and if you give them the opportunity to, they will. Thank you.
So, for me, when it comes to the teachers and the faculty, I think it is extremely important to have teachers and faculty that reflect the student population and kind of echo a little bit of what Tiffany said, going to these different programs. echo a little bit of what Tiffany said, going to these different programs and different schools and recruiting from there is going to be extremely important. Because going through the public school systems myself, I know it's a little bit easier to talk to somebody and feel a little bit more comfortable to talk to somebody that looks like me, that talks like me, that dresses like me, and that's extremely important for me, and I can tell that for most students, it's going to be very important for them. When it comes to the curriculum and really trying to have a class, I think that would be great to see in the Lynn Public School systems. I think having a safe space for these kids to really talk about their problems, having different faculty members or having different professionals that they can go to when they're having trouble or they're having a problem dealing with racism or bias with their teachers, that's very confidential, that they can feel safe, that they can speak to them, but also too, that they know that their voice is going to be heard and that action is going to be taken from that point on. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I wish I got that question before Tiffany, because she took the words right out of my mouth. Encouraging our children to become teachers is critical to help with the staffing, especially students of color. Giving them a pathway and tapping into the resources that we have in the schools and helping them, you know, find a pathway to get into education is critical with something like that. Also, our teachers just making deep connections and encouraging our teachers to make deep connections with students. You know, as I said, I'm a teacher, and one of the most important things, you know, my first couple of weeks of school is just making those connections with kids. If you can make connections with kids and you can be somebody they come to and speak to, they're going to do that. So I think that's also really important. In terms of the curriculum, there's plenty of literature, especially at the younger levels. I teach third grade, and there's plenty of multicultural literature that children can be exposed to at a young age that can help with these issues. And I think that, you know, putting that into our curriculum is critical as well. So, yeah.
Hello? Okay, can I start now? All right, so Tiffany sort of brought up the idea of early childhood, I mean, early college, and that's already being done by our schools. And Salem State College, we have a line, students are going to be able to go to early college and go to Salem State and be put in a track so that that tracking could bring them back to Lynn Public Schools as teachers. That's one thing. We have already implemented professional development on racism for all of our teachers and staff from January on to June. They were, they had sensitivity training through professional development. Hold on, I have the curriculum. I sort of want to piggyback with Eric because I was thinking that it is really, really important to have, like, books that children are reading to reflect the diversity that's in the classroom. And I'm running out of time, so thank you for that question.
Okay. The number one thing is recruitment, recruitment, recruitment. And if you haven't really looked at our Lynn Public Schools lately, our superintendent is African-American. We have done a new hire in the Welcoming Center. Used to be called PIC, Parent Information Center. There was no information, you know, that was worthy at times. So we've changed it to be the Welcoming Center, and it is run by a lady who was Hispanic. We're also have hired in all of our schools, parent liaisons, and one of the qualifications is that they speak Hispanic. So we have done a lot of hiring, you know, to accommodate and match up, so make the families feel more comfortable, as well as for the students. What I see the biggest problem is, is lots of times we don't have minorities candidates applying for the jobs. I took it upon myself about two years ago, I work at Joy Childcare Center with teen parents for 24 years. I took my list of all of my parents, I went down the list, checked back in with them, some of them I have checked in with them anyways, told them how good the jobs were. There were many minority gals, and just, there's quite a number of them working in the Lynn Public Schools now as clerks, working in different departments. So it's, you need to have people apply.
I don't know if it's a good thing to go last or first, but, so, yeah, so just, representation matters. When I see on the question, you know, students are not being seen or heard because of lack of representation, that's a very important feature to improve in our systems and delivery. It also impacts early intervention, because I believe our students shouldn't have to hit rock bottom to get help. None of us should. Mental health is everywhere. It's plaguing, it plagues, and it plagues our low-income minorities much more different. There's a disparity there. The data shows what really is. Data tells a story. A lot of my decision-making processes include data. I believe leveraging our data, our hiring data, retention, recruitment, we need to do better, especially when it comes to retaining staff of color, because as you know, representation matters. So some of the, you know, what I believe what we could do differently, so every, you know, every term, we have to meet with our mayor, and if I have the opportunity to meet with our newly-elected mayor, we have subcommittees. And I want to propose that we create a Diversity Action Subcommittee where we can work with our Diversity Inclusion Officer, Fostina Cuevas, who's very resourceful and the expert that we need to listen to, to complete this process, to inclusion, and to really pursue liberation and equity. That's very important. I know I'm on loose with time, but get things done.
Thank you. For our next question, it's going to go to the incumbents. So given that the school committee has signed a resolution in support of eliminating racism, one year later, please give us, sorry, please tell us what you have done for advocating, sorry, what you have done or advocated for us to restaggle.
So to be very honest and bold, as a child protective social worker, I've advocated at this, actually this issue at the local, state, and federal level. I actually have a good friend of mine in the back, Kay Sean Little. Please, can you give him a round of applause? He's our foster care recruitment folk over at DCF, and he's been instrumental in our, in a diversity action plan at the regional level. There's so much information and strategy out there. I think it's so important to learn what other people are doing, and it's collaborative compassion when it comes to racial equity. We have to stick together and learn together in order to improve these steps, and I've done that. I've taken the initiative without broadcasting my, I guess, I'm not here to show pony. Actually, I'm here to end performative allyship. I think my allyship is intentional. I think we got to build more relationships around how we can improve the conversation. It's a courage space. We need to make sure that those affinity spaces at our district are happening. The Lynn Teachers Union actually has a social justice, they have a committee where they actually are meeting with students of color, teachers of color, and improving the conversation, and they're getting educated. And as member Coppola said, we are rolling out professional development and curriculum updates, and we need to continue to have these dialogues with both sides of the aisle.
Oh, boy. Well, first of all, we need rigorous learning for everybody, every single one of our students, and to include this, to be part of understanding diversity, inclusion, and representation. And we need to continue, although we have done professional development, we need to do it often and continue to do it. You know, we have a staff of, you know, there's probably 3,000 employees in the Lynn Public Schools across from, you know, you're talking cafeteria people, clerks, all the way up teachers, administrators, and everything, and there's always a turnover. So you always, you have new people, you need to be, you know, training them and connecting them together with staff that do it right, and staff that are not doing it right need to be called out on it. And that's, you know, that's how I feel about it, but it's, you know, recruiting properly in the beginning, making sure people understand it when you're recruiting them, not after you get there and trying to train them. Let's get them in ahead of time.
It's my turn, right? Okay. So when I read this question, I was like, gee, what have I done? And what I have done is I have sat on many committees, and I have hired many people of color in very important roles. The last one I was in, I just hired a person that's very sensitive to the situation at Lynn English High School. And if you lived through Lynn English High School, you know that situation, and it needed to be addressed. And we need to work with our teachers and work with the staff throughout our district to make sure that they understand that we are all alike. We are. And it's like, our diversity makes us beautiful. It makes us who we are as a community and in our schools. So that's one of the things that I did and I worked on, and along with many others. I just don't like to see anybody being mean to another person. I'll give you one example. I was in the ad building one day, and a former student of mine was there, and this person was being very snotty to this person, and so I just ran up, put my arm around her, and said, "She was an A student in my class. Isn't she fantastic?" So you build people up, and you make them feel better, and you let people know they're all alike.
Okay, so our next question is going to be to the challengers. What would you do as a school committee member to help push the goal of eliminating racism forward? Yeah, forward.
So I guess I'll start. I think first of all, and most importantly, I think the students of Lynn need to understand that diversity in our city is its strength. It is a huge strength of our city. When they get out into the workforce, they're going to see people of all walks of life, and that's what they see every day in our schools. So I think it's a huge, huge strength, and just encouraging that and making children understand that is going to go a long way. But also, you know, teachers' professional development and the things that teachers are doing in their off-time is really important as well. And I know that it's begun. I do have some friends at a Lynn Teachers, and they've told me about it, and they're excited for it to continue. So that, you know, I think that it begins with that, but it just really begins with kids understanding that, you know, the diversity in the city is a strength, and it needs to just be encouraged that way.
Okay, so first thing for me is, I think the first step in this process is first acknowledging that racism does exist in the schools. I think that's the first step, and acknowledging that, which I think the school department and the school committee have done. The second part to this, I feel, is we have to start putting together different processes and different rules in place to make sure that if there is racism going on, that people are going to be held accountable, no matter if you're a teacher or you're a student. Everybody's going to be held to the same standard and have kind of a zero tolerance policy, making sure that this issue is going to be taken very seriously, and there's no issue that's going to be swept under the rug, and understanding that you are going to be heard, your voice is going to matter, and that there are going to be actions taken to eliminate this racism, but also get people out of the system that don't fit the new way of the new Lynn Public School system. So having those systems and those policies and procedures put into the handbook and have a solid policy in Lynn Public School system that says if you do X, Y, and Z, that is racism, then you are going to be subject to these penalties and these consequences. So I think that's what, a good way of eliminating racism moving forward.
So I just want to start out by saying that we need to emphasize that every single person is harmed by racism. I think often we get into this dichotomy that, like, white people are somehow immune and everyone else is harmed by racism, and literally just emphasizing that, because we know that 85% of the school personnel in Lynn are white. And so if we don't have a critical conversation that revolves around whiteness and white privilege, then we are eliminating the opportunities for learning for Lynn Public School staff and teachers. I would love to see a restorative justice model applied to issues of racism in the schools. I think when we come to a punitive part, what happens is that folks don't learn, and they don't grow, and they don't improve. They just take their racism and they stick it somewhere where it comes out in a different place. The positive about restorative justice is that can be included in the schools in very age-appropriate ways, and in doing that, what we're teaching kids is that this is an issue for everyone to learn from, right? We don't single out the Bosnian kid who does not know the difference between Afro-Caribbean and African, right? We have everyone learning together. Thank you.
Well, as a school committee member, I would help to push the issue and identify it and, you know, hold accountability with it, with racism. I would push and I would work hard with the administration and with the teachers to, like, keep, you know, make it an open conversation to, let's address this, let's hold each other accountable, you know, because together, you know, we're here, we're all in this together, you know, and that's a very important issue. Eliminating, it's going to take the effort of everyone, you know, admitting that there is a problem, which, like Daniel said, that, you know, we identify, but let's address it. Let's hold everyone accountable. Let's make the hiring process, right, for teachers, let's try to make it a little more lovely, and let's try to bring and advocate, to bring more people of color to represent that, you know, so we can, you know, like, you know, it's easier to identify with someone that you identify with, you know, someone that represents you. I would push, you know, I would certainly push to bring more teachers, you know, more diverse teachers, administration.
Well, I apologize most of the expression that all of you guys said, but it seems like the family be a part of this. And then I see, the first thing we need to do is include the family in this problem, because all the problem that we have in this street come out from the home, from our home. And then the discrimination and racism come from home. So we need to start repair from the root. We need to include the family, the parents. When we identify this kind of problem, we need to call the family, we need to sit together, and we need to talk, we need to try to fix the problem from the root, not just say, like, we need advocate, we need this, we need that. We need to include the parents in this problem. We need to call the kids and teach them how we need to be, deal with the others, diverse people that is surrounding us, because most of the time, we put it on the families apart, and we don't know what's going on in the house that the child acting that way.
So what level of eliminating racism are we talking about? I know in my own life, it's been a really wonderful journey and path of living racism in my own heart, and I learned that from the gospel of Jesus, I learned that from the good news of Christ, that I'm a sinner, and I often don't love my neighbor as I should, and that I need to work against that. And so what level of eliminating racism in our world, in our school, is an important question. What level of limiting racism in our school, maybe in the policy, right, in a hiring practice, in the way we monitor racism activity that occur? And so as a school committee member, it will be my top priority, one of my top priority. My top priority actually needing to build new school building for Lynn Schoolchildren. But I will also be alert, be aware, very aware that all of us have those tendencies, and we need to watch them. So I will promote that, I will call for that. When I see it, I'll take action, I promise.
Thank you. So the pandemic has shown us that even... So the pandemic has shown us that even though education is supposed to be equal, that there are many barriers that make equality of education a reality. What are some of the problems you see and how do you think this can be addressed locally? Starting with Hassan.
Yes. The inequality comes out during the pandemic in a severe way. You know, I, when I pulled paper and I had to hit the pavement from east to west and north to south, I actually went to the border of Lynn and Sagas that I've never, 30 years I've been in Lynn, I have not been there. I went to the border of Lynn and Swamscott and Lynn and the ocean, yeah. And I get to see a little bit of that inequality. I get to see kids without proper resource and Wi-Fi to access for their online learning. And so how do we rise up to this occasion and meet this inequality? I would say in the best new way that we can, but in the old-fashioned way that we have been as a species, that we would call each other to resiliency, call each other to generosity, to compassion. I don't think we need big brother to be generous all the time for us exclusively. I think each of us as neighbor, yeah, and so that we can step up in the way we respond to kids with needs. I have done that in my life. I have taken kids.
Well, the time was very difficult, but we learned that we need to be working together and we need to be supporting each other. So I see many, many issues with the internet access for all those children while you're the pandemic. And that was a very real issue for most of the family because even we are here, we have a lot of people that they don't have the access to internet. And that was a very difficult time for them. It was a very, very bad struggling, but it seems like a couple of people, they tried to have the support from the school and a couple of schools do it, but other schools didn't do that part very well. And then to do something different, if we are again in the same problem, it's time to be doing the old-fashioned like Safron say, but it seems like the humanity need to be, need to be work together, be indifferent and do a consent that we need to be make a change in our life to have a different style of life.
Yes. Pandemic. Well, COVID exposed a lot of inequities in our school system, you know, especially in special needs department and ESL and our EL students. And it affected our kids physically, emotionally and mentally, you know, and I think, I think as a school committee member, I would push and I would advocate to work closely with other nonprofit like the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club. There's a lot of, not everyone has all the resources and I think we need to really think about collaborating, working together as a team, you know, because it was, firsthand, I seen it, you know, in my home and not only in my home, but when I work at the Y and I seen a lot of kids that if it wasn't for nonprofits like the Y, they wouldn't have another meal or access to the internet. And it's something I think that we need to really address and take a second look like we got to prepare ourselves because we totally got, we got blindsided by COVID and it really exposed a lot of inequities and especially our EL students and ESL students. I would really push and advocate for that, more supporting those areas.
So I think this question is too big to completely cover in this amount of time, so I want to talk about one specific part of it. During the pandemic, it became very clear the essential nature of public spaces. When the library is closed, when the schools are closed, I have worked with some Levita students for the past couple of years, when that space is closed, where do students who live in much more crowded conditions than they might otherwise choose go? And the answer is they have nowhere to go. And I think it's really important to understand that schools are a part of this public spaces discussion and to understand their pivotal role in order to make them more accessible as public spaces. I think due to budget constraints, we have closed down our schools for anything other than education and we have the opportunity as we emerge from the pandemic to turn them into much more public spaces, especially in a city where we don't have a rec center that everyone can go to. We have very few of those public gathering spaces and we need to see the schools as the resources they are and utilize them to their best effect in the neighborhoods which they serve.
So for me, the pandemic was definitely an eye-opener. It definitely did show a lot of different inequalities when it came to education. And I feel that a lot of this came down to, if you take a look at a lot of the students in Lynn, they come from single-parent households, low income, where if you put that child in their house and they're supposed to log into school, they may, they may lag a little bit. They may not be able to focus as much as if they were in school. I think getting to the root of the problem and finding out why are so many kids struggling, why are so many kids having trouble in school during the pandemic, I think is a big, a big, big part of this question here. And understanding that everybody is a little different, but I've talked to different citizens and they've said their internet was slow, they didn't have the right laptop, they weren't able to stay home with their kids because they have to go to work because they're essential workers. So really kind of having that community around these kids to really help them thrive and be successful in school was missing. So I think bringing that component, that community element and surrounding these kids, because it is true, it does take a community to raise a kid, I think is very important for this, for moving forward when it comes to this equality of education.
Yeah, as been mentioned, you know, the pandemic did blindside us and it did expose many inequities in our community. I think the biggest one is probably technology. You know, lots of families were struggling at that end, you know, with their Wi-Fi or things lagging, you know, things in that nature and also just the childcare that needed, especially at the younger level. You know, I have two older students, so they were okay navigating on their own, but I can only imagine if they were at the elementary level, you know, what that would have been like getting them logged in and then, you know, parents that were working from home had to do their thing there. And then, as Daniel said, essential workers had to leave the house. So I think, you know, one of the things we can do is just making sure that we're checking in with families constantly and making sure that they're getting the things that they need from the schools and getting the things that we can provide. You know, blended learning is a term that's being used quite a bit lately and it's just the technology is going to become even more important moving into the future. So I think that, you know, like I said, just checking in with families, making sure they have the things they need, making sure that they have the resources that the schools can provide for them is going to be critical moving forward.
What a great question, Ron. What a great question. When the pandemic first hit, I recall Dr. Tuttwiler, we were all meeting on Zoom, Dr. Tuttwiler talking to us to the three most important things that we needed to do in the spring and that was food insecurity, health and safety of all the children in Lynn. He then went about and all of their administrators ran around and made like paper packets to drop off to students in our different schools because we were that far behind. We're not talking just a little inequity or we're talking huge leap, something we about on the school committee and mentioning and mentioning, but the funds weren't there. So then we got the funds and once we got the funds, Dr. Tuttwiler assured every student, every teacher to have a laptop. Also, we provided food, you know, through our school system. They could pick up packages of food every so many days. And then, I know I'm running out of time, but I want to get to this. And then he made certain that they had free Wi-Fi available to the students that needed Wi-Fi. So we got a huge glimpse of it. I sort of think that the pandemic helped us to move our district ahead where we should have been and now we're going to continue to move. Thank you.
Okay. Space is an issue, not only was it an issue for us to have the students in the schools, but the space is an issue for most of the families here in Lynn. I know for a fact there's families that had three and four children in one living room area trying to be involved with their classroom and having, definitely having trouble with the internet as we all had. I had it myself, trouble and, but we did supply internet for ones that didn't have it and in the downtown area here was very difficult to get internet for our students. We supplied devices for every, every single one of our students, our own, even if they had a computer, we required that they use ours. And some of the slow internet happened to be that the kids were adding games onto it, which slowed everything down, so that was a little bit of a problem. We hired a lot of IT professionals, which was really, really important for us to use. And we do have a better budget coming up, so this should be no excuse for getting things for students. If students feel and families feel that they're not being treated equal or they need services, then we have a great budget coming up for this year.
So I'd just like to just echo, I do share a lot of the, you know, what we just, you know, heard today about food insecurity, house, housing insecurity, the lack of technology access. I remember four years ago, this being a huge component to some of the inequities our students, especially our low-income students were facing. They had no internet and no access to technology. So this was a true crisis when the pandemic hit. You have a fully remote population with kids that lacked those resources to attain that. That was a really big problem and as we discussed, we were able to get laptops to mostly, you know, to a lot of the district. So, but it was a barrier. Technology access was new and it actually created internet safety issues that were, you know, something that I mentioned at our last budget, you know, we got to make sure that, you know, kids who are accessing our technology are well-equipped and the families as well. Communication is very important and it really, it does impact the quality of how we work together. The pandemic also highlighted the need of outreach. Outreach is such a crucial component because it takes a village, it really does. And some of the ways, you know, we had a district-wide strategic plan generated about four years ago, three years ago, and I got to take part of that. And they have initiatives and they have, excuse me, the superintendent and his team, they do have.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have Leilani.
Hello, my name is Leilani F. and I'm an uprising junior at Lynn Classical and I just would like to thank everybody again for being here. And for the next segment, we're going to be focusing on Lynn Public Schools' budget and accountability within Lynn schools and teachers. This is a significant topic because we are currently facing issues such as overcrowding, school bathrooms and classrooms are not being upkept. And there are some matters brought up by many people who have taken our survey regarding school upkeep in general. We will now hear from the candidates regarding the topic to hear from insight and what they have to say about it. So for the first question, there has been several cases of teacher and principals that have been publicly accused of racism and discrimination via social media. This is due to the fact that many felt there was no other way to take action. We'd like to hear from you about what we can make, what we can do to make it easier for students to report these issues, but also how to create a more transparent reporting process. We're going to start left to right, starting with Brian.
To start off, we have a zero tolerance. I know Dr. Tuttwiler, his team and us at the district on the school committee and folks in the administration from the teachers to across the board, we don't tolerate racism and discrimination. And those, those claims are taken very seriously and we do make sure that we follow up with our school security and emergency plan in liaison or in right, whenever we do flag that type of communication. We also have, we have to offer, you know, safe communication spaces for the disclosure. I think when students feel, students feel like there's no place to really safely speak about that and those type of situations, that's a problem. So I do encourage to, I think, speak up and speak out. It's very important for us to know that and if we have staff or anybody that is a bully and embodies that type of hate, discrimination and racism, they don't belong in our schools, they don't belong in the city. And you can call me at 781-346-2087 and you can reach out through Facebook, Snapchat, Instagram, WhatsApp. I'm very accessible and if anyone, you could tell every student out there that if you need someone to talk to, you could talk to me. I am a licensed social worker.
Brian is right. We have absolutely no tolerance and that includes our superintendent and our deputies and on down. They have had numerous professional developments, the staff, in regards to any of this. And, you know, we as members of the school committee are very aware and that that has gone on. Our superintendent has kept us up on how he has handled it, how the principals have handled it, different things. And it just cannot be tolerated, but, you know, one of the professional developments is if students are feeling uncomfortable and they don't feel like there is anybody there, one of the professional developments that we are offering staff is to, for them to reach out and be a safe friend to students in the school building. So I know that that is happening. If students still feel that way, then their fellow students should, you know, maybe speak out for them, be a friend to them and speak out for them and have it addressed in that way. Thank you.
Well, this is an interesting question and some people don't like to be whistleblowers and I'm not one to keep my mouth shut. So when I saw something, I said something and then, you know, you go to another school because you don't want to feel people's wrath on you because you spoke up. But I'm glad to say the culture in Lynn Public Schools is changing. Dr. Tuttwiler has, and the school committee has a zero tolerance on that. He also, Dr. Tuttwiler has a, has a policy where students can email him and tell him what's going on and express themselves, as well as I could call him and talk to him and express myself about a certain situation that I wasn't happy with and I wanted to change years ago, but it didn't change and I had to move on. But I'm glad to, glad to say that that climate, that culture is changing and it's going to change more and more. Dr. Tuttwiler, it takes like nine years for the culture to change, but it's in the process of changing and I'm very, very happy to share that with you today because I'm glad that it's changing.
Yeah, so just to piggyback off Lorraine, I think climate is essential for, to get at the root of this issue. You know, if we have a toxic climate, obviously that's going to go sideways for the students and we don't want that. It sounds like Dr. Tuttwiler has lots of things in place that are going to help with that. One of the things is the guidance counseling and the social workers that have been moved into, I know we're not talking budget, but those have been moved into the budget to hire more people there and I think that's a critical piece. You know, guidance councils and social workers are trained professionals that are, that can help children with things like this. Also, there needs to be a school-wide system, I think, of just reporting. You know, I imagine it cannot be an easy thing to go to an adult and say that this is what's happening, for some kids at least. I'm sure others wouldn't have a problem with it, but for some kids that, you know, they'd rather just go home, maybe talk to their parents and kind of deal with it that way. But we do need a school-wide system in place where kids can report and zero tolerance if it comes out that another student, a staff member, an administrator is acting in a way that's inappropriate, there needs to be a zero tolerance clause in effect.
So for me, this is, this really comes down to
So, for me, this is, this really comes down to communication and making kids feel comfortable. I remember when I was in Lynn Public Schools, I used to get a little, I used to get an agenda and used to have the student handbook in the back of the agenda. I feel that having a policy and having a system in place in something like that of a handbook that is not only given to students, but also given to parents, so parents understand what the system is, what the policy is, who the point people are, people that you can report these kind of issues. Because as Eric alluded to, maybe kids may not feel comfortable speaking to somebody in school, but they may feel comfortable speaking to their parents. And that's where the parents can step in and call that social worker or call that person in the school and say, "I have to report so-and-so for a racist act or something that was done to my child that I think is discriminatory." And I think it has to be citywide. So, really setting up that handbook, once again, that's not just given to students, but is also given to all the parents in the city of Lynn, so the parents know what to do if their child is being bullied or being discriminated in school and the student doesn't feel comfortable speaking up. The parent can speak up for them and really get this issue resolved.
So, I want to talk a little bit about the difference of the power dynamics if what we're talking about are students reporting what faculty and staff and administrators are doing versus students talking about one another. Because there's very different power dynamics. If you are relying on somebody to write you a letter of recommendation to get into a college, your incentive to not say anything is greater than your incentive to say something. And if we don't acknowledge that power dynamic, then we're actively disenfranchising our students. So, I think whatever system we need to use to look at how students report, whether it's overt racism, microaggressions, or the subtle racism of lowered expectations, it has to take into account those different power dynamics. And whether or not it's a system like restorative justice or something that allows there to be not a confrontation, which doesn't teach anyone anything and is punishment, but something which teaches the other person the harm that they have inflicted so that they can work to be a better person, I don't think that doing a full clearinghouse of the Lynn Public Schools is going to solve our problems. Racism is just going to exist outside. If we teach people the harm that they inflict, then they will be better people. And this is student to student, this is teachers to students, and this is teachers to one another.
Yeah, as Brian stated and the other incumbents stated, there is a zero tolerance policy, but the fact is, it still happens. And we need to encourage our students and our teachers to be transparent about the consequences and to be held accountable with this. I also agree with our curriculum. We need to have a system, a written curriculum, where we can have a set of rules or a system where parents can report this, make it easier for children, even form some committees with some students where if we see something, if they see an issue, to report it and to make it easier for students and parents to report this.
This problem is really bad. I suffered before, and it's really painful. And it's very difficult while we need to report somebody and not have a support from others. So, am I understanding? We need to work to have an office and have a personnel who could work with this and give the support. We need to have a social worker, and we need to make policies that we can support whoever is suffering that. But we need to have a personnel who can talk with the one who is doing the harm. Even that, like I said to the start, we need to start working with the families, because everything comes from the home. We need to know what happened in their house. We don't need to be like, who know everything, what is going on in the house, but we need to know why the other person acting that way that harms others at the school.
Thank you. I'd like to challenge this question a little bit. This question has two parts. How can we make it easier for students to report? And then, how to create a more transparent reporting process? I would say that it needs to go a little further. It needs to also ask a more transparent responding process. So, I'm not sure of all the obstacles for students to report. It might be, it might be the power dynamic. It might be needing a little bit more courage and safe space. But, I would say that we live in a time where we can make use of technology to create that safe space and that process of reporting. And so, I would want to ask a little bit more question about the nature of the obstacle, of the challenge, so that we can address it more specifically and create a process that addresses those specific dynamics. And then, there's a way to track the reporting. Did it go to the counselor? Did it go to the principal? Did it go to the superintendent? And what would the response from the counselor, from the principal, to what level? I think we can implement a technology process that we can look at that, just like police reporting.
Thank you. And for the next question, this goes to all candidates again. How much control does or should the school committee have on the budget? And compared to recently passed budgets, is there anything you would change when it comes to how funds are allocated? Starting from left to right with Brian.
So, I wish we had more control of the budget, but we have to wait for City Hall and the mayor and, you know, Superintendent Tuttwiler, they go out and they retrieve our final numbers. We work with Kevin McQ, our CFO, on establishing the parameters about where the needs are. But the work is really done with the community and the stakeholders, really listening to your priorities. Because your priorities, when you look at a budget every year, it reflects, you know, what the needs are. And when I go out and reach out to stakeholders, I make sure that, you know, before we get into the final budget process, we list those out in the superintendent's goals, and we get to meet together collaboratively with the superintendent to express and to advocate for you, to really advocate for everyone who votes for us. So, it's a process. I am grateful to announce that the Student Opportunity Act has brought so much needed funding to this district. Those that weren't part of this process, we had about 30-plus years of neglect. We had underfunding for a long time. And now, the Lynn Public Schools, this is our first year when really, we had that adjustment in the Chapter 70 formula that was broken. It's basically, you know, your rent kept going up every year, but you kept on getting paid the same. It's not sustainable. So, now, we have a well, a sustainable process when it comes to budget season. And your voice is important when we get to that point. So, you guys speak up, you meet with your, excuse me, I'm sorry, but you have to meet with your elected officials, you meet with us. We fight for you for that budget. Simple as that.
And we talk about a budget, and we talk about starting from the base. So, usually, the principal of the building meets with all of the staff within the building, see what the needs are, what the wants are, what the, you know, what they would ever hope that they could have or what kind of programs that they would be interested in having. So, it does start right from there. But like Brian says, it includes all of our partners out there in the community. And we do partner with a lot of people out in the community. But as far as what we get, we review the budget and we get to vote on the budget. But we're not able to just add things to the budget. We can cut things out of the budget. And, you know, we can have conversation with the superintendent as far as, you know, where we think it's weak in the budget. But we're really not able to do that. But I just want you all to know that this year's budget is $180.7 million. We have an increase of $14 million from Chapter 70. And we also have from the Student Opportunity Act, which is over seven years. This is going to benefit Lynn and all the urban cities.
I brought the budget. Does anybody want to see it? I really did. I just was like, what question are you going to ask me about the budget? So, I brought it. So, if you want to see it, I'll let you see it. We get this packet, it's about this thick, and we're giving it. And I personally like to make sure the class sizes and the elementary, elementary level stays the same. For example, I'll look at a third grade, say at one school, if there's three third grades, and make sure the following, like going into this budget, that the fourth grade have three classes. So, I want to make sure those classes are correct. It's pretty streamlined. And if, like Donna said, that we can only cut. So, we can't go in and say, "We want this, this, and this," even though we have. I don't know if you're aware of Tony Seifert. He has a program, an after-school program, that I really, really wanted to see in the budget. And his students, the students that participate, do very, very well. And I wanted to make sure that stayed in there, so I pushed that issue. So, we can push issues with Dr. Tuttwiler, but the budget comes to us and we check and balance everything and make sure, sure it's okay. And when you have $180 million on the line, it's a lot of money.
So, it's my belief, and I believe this is an accurate belief, that the school committee is more of an oversight of the budget. And, you know, Dr. Tuttwiler does present it. And I think it would be our job to just go through the line items, be prepared at the meetings, making sure that we've reviewed it, checked out all the line items, ask tough questions of Dr. Tuttwiler if need be, and then essentially vote on it. And I think, you know, at some point, you do have to trust the professionals. As school committee members, we are putting them in place. We are putting Dr. Tuttwiler in place, who then puts principals in place. So, we do have to trust the professionals. I did like to read in the item that $180 million budget has been mentioned and a lot of increases. One of the things, $50,000 for new uniforms for schools, which I think is really important for the athletics, you know, just building pride in the schools is super important for kids. Thank you, Donna. So, I love that one. Again, my kids play sports, so I'm a little biased, but I do love that one. And then, the Chapter 70 allowed for $10 million extra dollars, or 14, as Donna said, to move towards hiring guidance counselors, social workers, which goes back to our mental health discussion. So, I think we're moving in the right direction. And again, I think the school committee's job is just to be an oversight and ask those tough questions of the budget.
So, when it comes to the school committee, once again, the school committee is there to really just oversee the budget and really just ask questions and really just kind of hammer away the details and make sure everything, you know, is going the way it should be. One thing that I will point out that I did like to see, and that did happen, thank you to the school committee, was there were many millions of dollars that were allocated towards special needs, which I thought was huge. And they did hire some much-needed professionals for special needs programs, which I thought was awesome to see. But once again, this was a budget for many, many years that was being severely underfunded. And now, it's going, now you're going to see over the next decade or so, the Lynn Public School systems be, have the money that they should have had decades ago. So, you're going to start to see a lot of these programs. You're going to start to see a lot of teachers and professionals being hired into the school system. And you're really, hopefully, going to see the school system really take off and really be a big and strong and very good school system in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, once again, the changes, I believe, are coming. It's just going to take a little bit of time for that money to come in. But once it does, I can see great things coming down the way for Lynn Public Schools.
So, I think to answer this question for me personally, I want to get at the equity issue here. There's the budgeting process as it currently works, which has already been outlined. But every school is supposed to have a school council. This is supposed to be made up of teachers, parents, outside community members, and the principal. And my daughter goes to SISN. I'm not a member of the school council, but I was in these meetings. And one of the things that the principal said was, "If we could have something, what would you want?" Now, the school council is the exact right place for that to happen. But what I would love to see is for each school's identified needs, a visioning, if you will, to be included in this budget, to see that the schools are getting equitable treatment, which school's needs are another school's wants. There's no way for the school committee to have oversight of that budget to make sure there's equity and parity across the district unless we know what is bubbling up from the school committees, the school councils themselves.
The budget. Well, like it was already stated, as a school, you know, as a school committee, as a member, we can only, they can oversee the budget, but they do have the power to change certain line items in the budget. When you see a budget, you see certain needs for the district, you know. If there's anything, and just to be direct, you know, to answer the question, if there's anything that I could change, you know, how funds are allocated, I would go for a more equitable approach, you know? You know, when you see a budget, you see the needs of the district, you know, and grounds, you know, and athletics is something that I would really push for as a school committee member.
As a school committee member, I'm going to be working that those funding are divided in a good way. And then, like Manolia said, we need to identify what the school need and try to distribute the money in a set of way that they can, they can have a part of the need. Because the budget that we have all the time is not enough, because we have a lot of needs to cover, but the budget is not enough. And then, sometime, they didn't distribute an equality distribution.
I think the school committee can do a lot with the budget, and they should. After all, it's the most important thing the city can do, right, with the money. Education for our schoolchildren is actually one of the most important part of our city. And we should make sure that it is there strong. We should make sure that actually, it should be bigger than what the state asks of the city to do. We need to do even better. And so, I like the system. We provide oversight, but I think we also can speak into it. It's the final process, right? It came from the state, and it goes to the city, the city council, and then the superintendent, and they put it all together, and we get to look at it. And I think we have a great chance to shape it. And what would help us to shape it would be input. And so, I would welcome you guys being more active to help bring those input to us, so that we can do our job better. And I really like what the school committee did recently in July, where they did respond, and they get those uniform fund on the line item. So, yeah, I like what we can do as a school committee for the budget. I want to make sure that it's always going to be big, because it's the most important part of our city.
Thank you. Last but not least, Nisa.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nisa Lewis. I'm a recent graduate from Lynn Vocational Technical Institute and also a member of Prevent the Cycle. With this last part, we're going to be talking about and addressing mental health issues in the school system. Based on our survey, many stated there are resources for mental health, but they were inaccessible and lacked funding. One person stated on our survey, "While attending LPS, I was unaware of any resources that were available. And if there were, it could have made my time attending much better." Now, let's hear all the questions. So, this first question is going to be to the challengers, starting left to right, starting with Eric. As I stated, based on our survey, many stated that while there are mental health resources, they are inaccessible and/or lacking funding. This is especially problematic, since there is going to be a stronger need for mental health services and providers post-pandemic. What, if any, ideas do you have to both make sure resources are available and widely known and to assist with getting more funding for these programs? Eric?
Great, thank you. Great question. You know, mental health is critical. Children need to come to school, and they need to be ready to learn. And if they're worried about, you know, whatever it is they could be worried about, you know, access to education is impossible. So, this is a really important question. And I'm really sad to hear that your friend had trouble accessing the... And I'm really sad to hear that your friend had trouble accessing those things. So I think, you know, glaringly, you know, we need to publish these things to families and students, you know, what we're doing for kids to help with mental health, who you can go to, to speak to, and, and the different resources you have available. So obviously, that's something that we need to make more widely known. And also, our teachers, we need to just really encourage, and I know I've already said this, but we need to really encourage them to make deep connections with those students. It's, it's really important that kids come to school, and they, it could be one person, it could be, you know, the secretary, it could be anybody, just our staff, to really just make those deep connections with students and, and give them someone to go to, to speak to, because it's not always easy to do at home. And the kids need to have the adults at school to, to, to turn to. And like I said, if, if kids aren't ready to learn, if they're not mentally prepared, if there's something distracting them, trauma, whatever it might be, they're not going to learn, you know, because they're going to be more worried about whatever it is that's going on, and not two plus two. That's, that's, that's not their concern in their life. So these are big issues, but I think the biggest thing is just making sure we're communicating and making deep connections with the students.
So for me, when it comes to resources, I think it's going to be very important for communication to happen. For example, when students go to school on the first day of school, why not give the student a, a little packet when it comes to different services available to them in the school when it comes to mental health? Different people that they can talk to. But also, too, having the schools collaborate with many different nonprofits in Lynn. Lynn has many different nonprofits that, that really speak to mental health issues that can really help these kids when they're coming from troubled homes. But when it comes to assistance with getting more funding, once again, the money is starting to flow in, the money is starting to come into the city, and it'll really come down to hiring social workers and really hiring professionals that can deal with mental health. But also, too, making children feel comfortable to go to these professionals and really speak to them and really get down to the root of their problem. Because as Eric alluded to, if the children come in and they're preoccupied or their mind is somewhere else and it's not ready to learn, then they're going to be stressed out, and they're going to, it's going to show in their grades, and they're going to perform poorly. So really making sure that these kids feel comfortable and making sure that the communication is going out to the kids and parents in many different languages, over many different platforms, to make sure that everybody is aware of the services that are available at Lynn Public Schools.
I think this is an issue that I don't think that public schools can solve all on their own. I think that they can be a conduit for resources within the community, but I think that the amount of resources that the schools themselves have are never going to be adequate, because Lynn is a, a community that has generational trauma. It's not just the mental health challenges of individual students, it's their parents, it's their grandparents, it's the push and pull reasons for immigration. All of these things filter down to the mental health challenges of any individual student, which means that if we don't take a community-based approach, then we will not solve the problems of any individual students, because it's like putting a Band-Aid on, you know, an arm that's been lopped off. So I think that the schools need to be better partners within the community in terms of resourcing, whether it's Lynn Community Health or any of the other nonprofits that specifically deal with these types of trauma. But I think it's also really important to understand that we have to change the conversation around resourcing mental health accessibility, which is that it's something that teachers, in the same way that I'm a mandated reporter for child abuse as a professor at North Shore Community College, I should be able to have the training, because it's an online, very easy thing, to talk about how to give resources to somebody in mental health crisis. And I think if everyone is part of the solution and we look to our larger community, that's how we deal with it.
Yes, accessibility to mental health resources is very vital for our students to succeed. Just like Tiffany mentioned, and I mentioned before, I think that we need to reach out to these other nonprofits that are in the city, so we can collaborate and work together, because we're not, we just don't have it, you know, they, we know we're getting the funding, and it's going to come in, and we're going to hire other, you know, we're going to work on, you know, mental health and that, but we don't have those resources right now. So we need to reach out to these nonprofits and start working collaborative with them, you know? They have resources, and we can, also, there's a, I know that we work with Lynn, Lynn Community Health, and there's a, some of the schools have Lynn Community Health Centers in them, and we could try to branch out even to, you know, extending, you know, bringing more, more funds towards mental health, you know, bringing psychiatrists and counselors and stuff like that, because it's very vital, you know? Also, the size, you know, when, when, when the increasing of the students in the classroom, you know, it eliminates some of the core, you know, eliminates a lot of the core, let's see, courses that, that, you know, that a lot of, you know, classrooms are teaching, eliminates, you know, those core values, and makes it tough, and makes it hard.
Well, over here, the main problem is the information, and I give you an example. When I running the first time, somebody called me, a mother called me, and I contacted Brian, that he knows what I'm going to talking about. She have a problem, she have a kid with a special need, but she don't know about the services, and she don't know what kind of type of services the city could give it to her or the school system. So she reaching me up, and then I put her in contact with Brian Castellano. He give you the info, and she give it, she have those services, and she get other people involved in those services. So we have a lot of issues, but the first issue we have is the info. So we need to inform our community what services we have, but apart of that, we need to know what kind of services each children has. And then, after we know that, then we can support those kid with the services that we can implement to the system. And then, the budget, the budget is another problem, but if we were together, we could have a different result from then. And then, if the, the business and the community try to help the school supporting, we could have a different situation.
So we are on our last topic, mental health, and it is a very important issue. I think, looking at education, it's not just the curriculum, it's not just the teacher, I think it's nutrition, I think it's health. I think the, the Facebook Foundation, Priscilla Chan, the Chan Foundation, they are focusing on this aspect of education as well. And, and I'm excited to talk about them, because they are important, but I'm kind of disappointed you guys skipped the, and the last topic, how do you plan to address overcrowding as a member of the school committee? I'm disappointed, because I think that is a very big issue we're sitting on. It's the trauma that we are sitting on. The overcrowdedness is unbearable. And with our city growing in population, with all these units coming online in less than six months, we will have a bigger problem with overcrowding. So that's a very important question, and we got to deal with it in a very innovative way. I have a plan, it's called Lynn for Steem. If you want to be part of it, I need you to be part of it, I need all of us to be, we are going to do this together. Go to, go to votepossan.org/lynnforsteem, and you can be part of it. And for mental health, I think that maybe we can create mental health awareness movement, where we can create safe space for students to come.
All right. Last question of the night to the incumbents, left to right, starting with Brian. Can you tell us what you have done to make mental health resources and professionals available as current school committee members?
Respectfully, I need to get up, my legs are falling asleep. So, first of all, I want to thank you for bringing light to the issue of mental health. I've been vocal about mental health throughout my tenure on the school committee. Again, I, I, I'm someone, when I first ran for office, my priority was to improve our systems in our social, emotional, learning, and mental health systems. Back in 2019, I had a group of students from Marshall Middle School reach out to me, and they did a civics project, and I, and it was about social workers and the need and the lack of. And they broke it down to me, and, and earlier, we talked about the budget. So that group of civic students actually got that letter to our budget, and I actually advocated. Fast forward four years later, we just doubled the capacity of social workers and clinical infrastructure in Lynn Public Schools. So we do have advocacy opportunities when we deal with that budget. I've activated student voice in my policy decision-making processes. I recently actually was invited with my good friend and colleague, Antonio Anderson, to Breed Middle School, where we also, we learned about the need in our mental health curriculum updates from DESI. We got them to the table, and it was great to hear the, my colleagues and the superintendent were all supportive of these initiatives to highlight the need in mental health. You cannot give up on this initiative. I will push this initiative, this is what I do every single day. We need to end the trauma, the prison pipeline, and the school to prison pipeline now. End the trauma.
Okay. It's a, he's a hot act to follow when it comes to the mental health issue. But I think we're all passionate about that, and we all understand that our kids are suffering, and it need not be. But I think when school opens in September, I think mental health is going to be the number one issue that, you know, is really going to have to be addressed. But, you know, as Brian said, we have 19 new social workers in this budget, and that's excellent. And I'm disappointed that, you know, there was a student at Lynn Tech that didn't know, you know, where they could turn, because we have social workers in that school. We also, there was a time when we were sharing nurses between schools, but that no longer exists. We have nurses, we have multiple nurses in the secondary schools, and we have a wonderful partnership with Lynn Community Health Center that's in Lynn Tech and a lot of the other schools as well. For instance, just in Ingalls, there are four behavioral, behavioral health therapists, just in that one school alone, to help address any of these problems. So, you know, during, and during the pandemic, when the students were at home, on the school committee, we got many, many calls from parents who, the kids were just in shutdown, they, you know, they couldn't go on, and lots of help was given through the school department.
So, right microphone. All right. So in 2015, when I got on the committee, I went to a meeting with other school committee members from all over the state, and the big issue was social, emotional learning. So from there, we hired a social, emotional learning coordinator, and we got a new curriculum in K through 12. Enter Brian. Once Brian got onto the committee, he's a strong advocate for mental health, and he pushes the issue and makes people understand that this issue is not to be ignored. So where I gave a little bit, let's do this, SEL, he came in with his social worker background and Mrs. Compola's understanding of the issues for students in pre-K through to. And I think we're doing a pretty good job with mental health. We have Lynn Community Health in several of our schools, and we now have like 19, I just, social workers working with our students to make them better. Thank you.
So before I wrap up the night, I want to give a special thanks to Nikia Navarro with Building Adacity, Jonathan Feinberg with the New Lynn Coalition, all our volunteers, the Lynn Museum, and the school committee candidates for being here and allowing us to have such an eventful forum. I would like to ask if they could close off the night with some last words to us all. Please remember, you will each have one minute, and we will start from right to left, starting with Pusann.
Thank you. My last word is that all these topics, they are crucial, but overcrowding is unbearable, especially with our city population growing. I'll tell the city council, what about the traffic load, right? I can't imagine the traffic will be, it's already bad on Western Ave, very heavy traffic hours. So we need to build a new school right now. We need to build several new schools right now. And there's a plan that I have that involve all of us. We need to do it together. How do you eat an elephant? When I start serving and leading, the answer to that question was that you take it one bite at a time, that's how you get big problems solved. But sometime, you don't have all the time. So what do you do? You have to bring the whole family, you have to bring the whole village, the whole city. And that's what the plan require, all of you, all the city. I'm going to ask the city, the mayor, I think the old American Marshall is still the Lynn Public Schools building, I think they should designate that building to the new school, not give it away.
Well, I see that we need more school, that's right. But I've been thinking the whole week, what about the school that we already has that they need to be improved, that they need to be repaired, what about then? So I said, we need to be focused in those schools that we have already, and, and repair them. And then, then, we think about it to have more new buildings. And our community is being growing, but we need to work together, and we need to find out those sources of money to bring to our school, for we have a more development on them, and have a better services for our community.
Well, thank you, Prevent the Cycle, for having this forum, and everyone who attended. I want to thank you, my name is Lenny Peña, and you heard all the issues we have tonight, there's a lot of issues in our school system, and it takes a village, you know, to raise a child, and I'd like to be part of that committee, you know? I promise you, if elected, I'm going to work hard, you know, and I like to be a parent voice, a voice for all. You know, el día catorce de septiembre necesitamos su voto, el día segundo de noviembre. I'd like to be a voice for all. Thank you.
I also want to say thank you to Prevent the Cycle, and I want to say, the reason that forums like this are important is because our questions came from you. And that, as elected officials, is our job. We need to create the systems that involve people. And if we're not creating them, then we need to go, and new people who will figure out how to create them need to be elected. Thank you.
So I just want to say thank you to Prevent the Cycle for hosting this event. Thank you, I really appreciate it. And I just want to say, you know, being a Latino in the city of Lynn, going through the Lynn Public School Systems, once again, I will be an advocate for everybody in the Lynn Public School Systems, whether you're, you have an IEP, or whether you're an ESL student, or whether you're just a regular student trying to find your way through the public school system. I will be that advocate for you on this school committee and continue to fight, and fight, and make sure that you get the best opportunities that you can, but also to make sure that you get a quality education, so when you live, when you leave Lynn Public School Systems, you are prepared for life, and you are prepared for the challenges that face you in life in general, and making sure that you are going to be the most successful person in this society as you can. Thank you.
Yes, so I'd like to thank Prevent the Cycle and our students here. I mean, you guys are the reason I'm running. You guys, I mean, if I were your parent, I'd be so proud of you guys. I know there's a proud mom over there, Natasha. So you guys are just great, thank you for doing this. And it just helped make the community more informed, and we were able to express our opinions about what we can do to help with the committee. Frederick Douglass, who was once a Linner, once said, "It's easier to build a strong children than it is to repair broken men." And I strongly believe that, and that's why I'm running. You know, I, I think the children of our community are the most important thing that we have, and we need to teach them properly, and we need to educate them properly. So thank you. I'd like all of you to get out on September 14th and November 2nd and vote, and I hope I can be one of your six. Thank you.
Well, when I first got on the school committee, I wanted to have a special goal of making our system an excellent one. My future goal with our next school committee is to work hard for students, parents, teachers, and staffs to continue to work hard, so our students are prepared for their future. I'm adding another goal, and the other goal is I, to make sure all the students in Lynn are prepared for the future with the hopes, and this is true, the hopes that they come back to our city to give back and continue to make Lynn better. It's really important that you come back and you help us to make the city the great city that it has the potential to become. So you trusted me with your children for 33 and a half years, so please continue to trust me and vote for me, or give me one of your six, and November 2nd this year. Thank you.
I do thank the Prevent the Cycle. I do thank the Prevent the Cycle, and I am so proud of you students. So obviously, Lynn is doing something right in all of the schools that we have here in Lynn, and there's many of you that are also doing other things out in our community, volunteering at my brother's table, and volunteering and helping the food drives, and worked hard to get the Black Lives Matter, you know, on our streets, and so, I'm proud of all of you. But, you know, I show up all the time, I listen, and I work hard to make sure that the students in Lynn have what they need. I've enjoyed it, I'm humbly asked for one of your four votes, Johni Coppola, thank you.
I want to thank, again, the student panel, you guys are the reason why I'm here, I'm inspired, and when I, when I see this, this, this forum put together so well and organized, it really just, it really makes me very happy and, and humbled to be here. I want to share a quote that I, I ride with me every day, "It's the children the world almost breaks who grow up to save it," by Frank Warren. I, I come from the bottom, and I had to claw my way here to break through the cycle that you talked about, I was born in the cycle. I come from an immigrant family, father of a janitor, the son of Liliana Vergara Castellanos, who passed away in Peru. I immigrated here when I was three years old with nothing, so I have a master's degree, a bachelor's degree. I bought my first home last year, it, it was, I broke housing insecurity that plagued my, plagued me for so long. No one's going to work harder than me on this issue. I mean, I might work just as hard, but I doubt it, I'm willing to go out above and beyond, I don't stop. I'm, I'm 3:30 in the morning, I'm out and at it every single day.
Although all of the school committee candidates will be moving forward after the primary, we still encourage everyone to register and go out and vote. Primaries are September 14th, and the election is November 2nd. Good night, everyone, and thank you all for coming.